Six thirty-one, and we've got a quorum, so all the meeting to order. So this is the September tenth Planning Board meeting, and we're meeting at six thirty instead of our regular seven o'clock tonight. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of August twentieth, 2013, and August twenty-seventh, 2013, as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any further comments on these minutes?
Comments incorporated in that were taken.
Yes, yep. And I sent you an email to that effect.
Okay, so on both instances?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. And we go on to, we have two approval not required here. The first is Laura McMahon to redefine lot lines at fourteen eighty-seven Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, and it's GAF Engineering. Please come to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering. You have before you tonight a revised A&R plan. We were before you a month or two ago with a plan. We've since made modifications showing a wetland line which has been approved by the Conservation Commission. So now the lot areas are shown with the upland area requirements all correct, and everything should be in order.
Okay. Do you have any comments on this, Brian? Do any of the board members have comments or questions?
Which lot lines are being redefined?
Lots one and two.
Lot one and two.
And two, oh, I see, lot two, okay, yeah, okay, I see it.
I'm sorry. Well, they're all being changed in some fashion, but this plan is creating, well, there was originally a JC Engineering plan. Let me back up a little bit. Two thousand and seven JC Engineering did a plan creating these three lots, and we modified those three lots with a plan before you approximately two months ago. And this plan shows a approved wetland line with final modifications.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
I could make a comment, but it wouldn't have to do with validity of the plan.
No. Okay, so I need a motion.
I'll move that we endorse this approval not required of Laura McMahon's.
Okay. Okay. Do we usually put on without regard to buildability or anything like that? I know we used to have a...
When the plan depicts some zoning deficiency, typically I ask the designer to put such a note on the plan, but this plan doesn't depict any zoning deficiencies.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded. If there are no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Thank you. The next one is Matthew and Resslyn Seiler to combine two lots into one lot located zero in ten Nashewina Street, Falmouth, and the engineer is John P. Doyle.
Mr. Doyle won't be here tonight, but the plan depicts a combination of two lots. You can see there's a lot line that's going away in the middle, and then you have a new parcel.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Now, any questions, discussion on this one?
Just observe that this partially undoes what we just did on the other one.
Yeah.
Created two new lots, but we've taken away.
I'm surprised you don't join that.
You haven't taken.
It all comes out in the wash, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's still fine.
Well, it just shows detail in this corner.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm surprised it doesn't go to the stump bough.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
And I just want to amend the agenda that shows a third, is not required.
Oh, yes, I did say two. That was the old one. So the third one is...
It's not on the agenda, though.
The amended...
The amended agenda. The third one is Tony Macchioni. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right.
That's about right.
What is it? Okay. Close. To exchange equal amounts of land between two lots located at three Echo Avenue and thirty Crescent Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts, and the engineering firm is BSS Design.
My name's Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with I'm at Law Firm here in Falmouth. Tom Bunker couldn't make it this evening, so he asked that I come in instead. Pretty simple. The three Echo avenues are being sold, and a personal was discovered onto the neighboring property. So they are doing a landswalk of seventy square feet here for seventy square feet here. Are you any good on this? It's also straightforward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know when this was brought into the office for the planning. When was this submitted to the planning?
September tenth.
Probably about two-thirty this afternoon, so...
Two-thirty this afternoon?
Probably.
But I really have issues with that. I don't care whether it's approval not required or not, but that's just, I don't think it's fair to our staff, and I don't think it's fair to the Planning Board that we accept such things. I think we should have been, this should have been postponed until next week. We got an amended agenda, which we were not notified about.
Can I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
When the plans are so ministerial, Ralph, so simple, that the board, I believe, had this discussion some time ago, that if you look at your original agenda, it says plans received between August twenty-first and September the tenth.
I know what it says.
So my instructions from the board are, we can accept these plans that are so ministerial and so routine in nature, so that the applicant actually would have to wait another two weeks, because you're not waiting, this is not meeting for two weeks. So my understanding is we're just authorized to bring them in to you. My sense is, Ralph, that if they were very, somewhat more complex and not so ministerial as such as this, I wouldn't have brought it to you. Or if it was a complex like we just saw on Jupiter Row, I would say, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. So I'd ask for your indulgence on a very simple ministerial plan that we're authorized to bring in front of the board. I believe it's entitled to your endorsement, approval not required. And we can further this discussion, then, if, in fact, the board members don't want to see these plans, then the staff won't bring them in. In the meantime, that's the instructions we have, and the plan is properly before.
This plan, as shown, can have no conceivable adverse effect on any public nor any other. In the meantime, although we might fault the real estate agents involved and lawyers involved, but not having brought it sooner, we do have to consider the fact that there is a purchaser and a seller who is entitled to this relief. There's no question they will be entitled to the relief, whether it's tonight or a week from tonight, and there's no reason to hold on to a pending sale. And that's just, you know, consideration for the people who are being affected by this.
Does anyone else have comments?
Just that by the nature of a real estate transaction, these things do come up, and they try to move quickly to resolve them, and sometimes these things happen.
Somebody might have financing in place, and they may be under the gun to, you know, to close one of the year, you know, or not. I mean, that's why, if it's purely ministerial like this, and it's nobody, it's possible he's going to be adversely affected by it, there's no issue with dealing with it.
That's why the board in the past has given staff permission to bring these up before us without usual several weeks.
Why don't we dispose of this issue, and then we can bring it up again for new business later on, because I want to make sure everyone's satisfied.
I vote it.
Okay, and it's been seconded.
I just have a quick question. The parcel A is adjusted to take advantage of the existing patio, concrete patio, is that correct? So they're transferring a small portion of the lower end to...
Concrete side of the patio, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions or comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
I'll abstain.
Thank you very much.
That one was a draw. No new lots created, no lots taken away.
Okay, we move on to discussion. And we had asked the staff some time ago to bring us up to date on certain things that are coming up. And so the floor is Brian's to move through this. And I would suggest that after he gives the presentation on each one of these, this presentation, that we then pause so that the board can ask questions of Brian. Okay?
All right, so the first project updated are the intersection projects at Davisville and T-Ticket, and you should have the drawings in front of you. These projects will be advertised by Mast Dot September the fourteenth, which is in four days. They anticipate a spring startup. They'll go through the procurement process this fall, sign up the contracts, and they expect sometime perhaps late February to start some of the survey work, and maybe some of the utility work in March and April. But you can see that the plans haven't really changed from the twenty-five percent design. They show the channel lanes going back. Let's say if you're looking at the top drawings, that they can stop and shop lights. They go back an additional hundred, two hundred feet. Those plans also show some of the existing conditions, so you get an idea just exactly where these improvements are going to be made. These are federal construction dollars. They're administered by Commonwealth Massachusetts. We go to these meetings down Cape. This is where Marlene goes to the meetings with the Joint Transportation Committee. Sometimes you'll see that. She's not in the office on Fridays while she's down Cape. They vote, they actually vote the regional shares of these federal construction dollars, and she represents the town. It used to be Mr. Collessen, myself, now it's Marlene and the current, acting, the current town engineer. So hopefully, we will see some startup of these projects in March. There will probably be a summertime exclusion, and this time next year, or than likely, you'll, once things slow down a little bit, you'll see the actual construction done. There will be a traffic management plan put together between the contractor and Mast Dot for both intersections. I know that was an issue that came up at the Selectmen's meeting. But there will be, they have to keep the intersections open for business, make it safe. And those planning documents, or those management documents, will be put together sometime late this year, once they know who the successful bidder is. They have to come in with certain performance guarantees and, you know, bid bonds and whatnot. And they'll put that together, and I'll make sure the folks in Davisville who are concerned get a copy of that. They'll know exactly what's going to happen. But I said it takes three years. It started three years ago, and sure enough, three years later, we're going out to advertise it. You may remember East Falmouth School. I don't know if you were there, Doug. I said that it would have grown. But believe it or not, this project was fast-tracked. Both projects were actually fast-tracked because we were, I don't make this stuff up, because the town was able to design the project and move it along, and we had a really good expediter. That's the status of the intersection projects. We will be going out sometime this fall, we hope, once the projects we know are going to be constructed and let out, and awards are made. After we know these things are actually going to happen, sure, we will issue a request for proposals for the landscaping contract. That will be a separate contract, a separate project, probably outside, so it's outside the right-of-way of the state layouts. So we'll be working with the property owners. We've already contacted the folks at Davisville, two years ago now. And hopefully, that design effort can be undertaken sometime late this year or early next year. We'll get lots of public involvement, and then once these, once these intersections are then done, probably this time next year, late in the fall, when planting, you try to plant in the fall, the landscaping will also be done. That's our, that's our plan. That's our schedule. So you know what I know.
Okay. Rich?
We have no input on the actual traffic flow issues.
You mean the configuration of the intersection now?
Yeah.
That was two years ago. Remember, two years ago, I brought them in at twenty-five percent. You had some questions and some concerns. We passed them along. There were some curb cut issues, but they were...
The only issue I have is at the intersection where you're coming from, Jones Road, and entering the Spalma Highway, on the deck, there is a right turn on red there, but very often you can't make it, because even though it's wide enough, even though it's wide enough for three cars to exist there, people often, people often going straight ahead often block the right turn.
We're here too soon.
It would really just require a painted line, you know, just a little paint, not a, we figure at the intersection, just to say, if you're going straight, stay in the middle.
There's only two, though. Left turn only, and right, and straight.
No, no, this, okay, that's now going to be a left turn, yeah, it's a left turn only. There's a straight, but there's room enough there for all three, for a right turn.
Brian's saying no.
There's room on the pavement. I go there all the time.
If you have a little car, but...
It's too late anyway.
This is at a hundred percent design, it's being advertised. We looked at all sorts of lane configurations. This was the optimal one.
I mean, it just happened to me yesterday. I was coming out of the Stop and Shop, I was on the way over to Rimfall.
Happens all the time.
Sure enough, there was something sitting there, right in the middle of that lane, and there's plenty of room to move over to the left and clear the right turn.
But...
It's going to happen here, too.
This is the way it is.
Unless it's one more lane.
Right. Do you want any other further land taking?
That doesn't bother me, because I don't go out these times.
Okay, Paul.
Just a question. The drawings for the two intersections we have here have no attribution. I presume this is from the latest version of the state drawings, is that right? There's no reference to what these things are from.
These are just the drawings that were given to me as a PDF from the designer. They're not the stamped drawings, they're not the, they're not the full plan specification and estimates, because they have all sorts of...
But they're from the state design that's being bid this week?
Right, but this, that package is, you know...
I understand that, but this is an excerpt from that. It's the latest version is what I'm trying to get at for that intersection, is that correct?
It's the latest version, but it's probably not part of the PSNE that's being advertised.
Which is one page.
Which is one, it's just one page of the design. When you see the finished product, this is what we'll see on the...
Well, I've seen the finished product. It's about that thick, both intersections, or one. I was just wondering where this came from, because there's, it wasn't one particular drawing, it was pulled out and copied. I don't know where it came from, is my question.
It came from the design engineer. He wanted something fairly clear, without a lot of the construction details, and he zipped off a lot of that and sent it to us.
Actually, I'm guilty of asking to do that, because we presented too many details and we couldn't see it, so I asked to have a simplified version.
Correct. So this is a, it's a simplified version given to me by the designer.
The point is, it represents what's being bid.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. So next is the medical marijuana bylaw.
So the last time we talked about the medical marijuana bylaw, we were kind of struggling with the five hundred feet in schools, and what does it mean to be a place where children congregate or whatnot. So I made some copies of the Dennis bylaw for the board. That bylaw was passed by the Town of Dennis and approved by the Attorney General's Office. And I gave the board a copy of the Mashpee bylaw, which you have in your package. And that's scheduled for their October town meeting. And the, both of those versions are actually something along the lines of what I'm thinking of now to discuss with the board, because they simplified it very nicely by simply allowing them in their industrial districts by special permit with some performance standards that you might be concerned about. So we had a kind of a talk about it with the other of my fellow planners, and I thought that was the way to go. You reference some of the CMRs. A CMR means Code of Massachusetts Regulation. And you put them somewhere where you probably know you're not going to have a lot of the issues associated with the performance standards of separations from schools and whatnot. So that's the direction. I think I'm going to ask the board to head in about that, so I would ask the board to read through these. Not verbatim, like we just changed Dennis to Falmouth, because some of the things that they have, I don't quite agree with the details. But the concept is an industrial district, special permit, reference some of the CMRs, and it will be a relatively simple exercise also for town people. And I'd like to bring you a version of that probably sometime in early October, next couple of weeks, and I'll have to work on it for you, knowing that this is the sort of concept you are moving forward with. And I'm looking forward to a, thinking about the light industrial B-zone district, which is our tech park, because there'll be manufacturing goods, they'll be producing aerosols or foodstuffs or whatnot. So I thought that might make some sense. The restrictive covenants in the park are now expired. There is, however, the development agreement with the KOD Commission, that still regulates some of the development that goes on there. But I thought that might make some sense. It's far afield from the schools and the churches and the playgrounds and whatnot, and it is an industrial park. So those are the three concepts I would leave with the board for your initial reaction to tonight, and then we'll devise something for your discussions over the next two weeks, probably. Actually, two weeks would be September twenty-fourth. So we'll try to get you something back. But this, an initial reaction to this concept would be helpful for me.
When I read that section about it being limited to an industrial zone, I said, those same thoughts crossed my mind. It eliminates a lot of other problems, simplifies the process, and we have an area for that. So I think I would tend to move in that direction myself.
Okay, but we do have other industrial zones that...
So you would, but you only have one light industrial B-zone. That's the tech.
Okay. So you would really limit it right there. Yeah, okay. Ralph?
Yeah, I read them both, and I don't know whether you want my comments now, or do you want me to just hand them to you?
For the board and the public and...
All right, well, on the Mashpee town, Mashpee one, it doesn't specify who's the granting authority for the special permit, so that definitely has to, has to be done. But it was in the Dennis one. In the Dennis one, on page one-hundred-and-fifty, which is the second page of this thing, I had three things. Under thirteen-five-two, it says, it talks about it cannot be in excess of twenty thousand square feet. I thought seven, I thought we ought to consider seven thousand square feet, because otherwise it requires another special permit from us. On thirteen-five-four, I thought we might want to include, eliminate Sunday. On thirteen-five-five, they indicate certain areas that they want it to be avoided from. I would say the Shining Sea Bike Way and the Falmouth Hockey Rink would be appropriate for us. On page one-fifty-one, up at the top, C, I asked my wife about this, because she deals with medical issues, and evidently, the retail sale of this marijuana or marijuana substances is the way they refer to it, even though it's charged, even though it might be charged to your insurance or to an HMO or something. She indicated to me that she didn't think any insurance plan would cover the cost of medical marijuana. That's what, that's what she said, and she deals with insurance plans all the time. So I don't know whether there's anything to be said about that or not. Down under thirteen-six-four-A, this says the facility is designed to minimize adverse effects. I said I thought we ought to put avoid instead of minimize in there. Under thirteen-six-six, it talks about the duration of the applicant's ownership. They may not own the facility. They may lease it or rent it, so you have to make sure that that's covered also. And on the last page, thirteen-six-seven, it also talks about the time of construction. You don't know whether they're going to construct this thing or not. They might just lease a, lease a property or something, so that should be, or it might be a renovation of a property, so that you can't be so specific as to say construction. And those are my comments on the Dennis one. I would probably...
Yeah, I just had two comments. One is, I'm a little confused by the issue of the cultivation of marijuana and the center itself, because, A, industrial area may not be appropriate for cultivation, and it seems to be, need better definition of where the cultivation is if it's not at the same site, unless it's an enclosed building that you're doing it in a garage-type facility. I know, I think that needs to be tightened up a little bit.
Yeah, my understanding is that this, the cultivation has to be inside a building, it has to be medical grade, whatever that means. It can't be like out in the field.
But it could be outside, in which case it adds other security issues.
All right, I will, I'll take a peek at that.
Okay, the other issue I had is this item that Ralph mentioned on the Dennis bylaw, where it talks about thirteen-six-point-four mandatory findings. The facility is designed to minimize adverse visual and economic impacts. I tried to look up what the law said, the general law of forty-eight, and I couldn't find it quickly. And that seems to be rather nebulous, you know?
Which is why I said, there's some things in the Dennis bylaw, you know, I'm going to try and take out.
But it seems like it's not a real good definition of what that means, and somebody who lives nearby might say, I find it offensive, even though they don't even know it's there. So I think you got to take a look at that a little bit to make sure that's fair to everyone.
Right, I'll try to weed out all of you. We call them undefined standards.
Thank you.
Rich?
Yeah, I have one question, but I should just quickly respond to Ralph. The construction and the location, just put your order in. The construction and the location renovation, just put your order in. My concern is this. At least according to the Dennis bylaw, it's limited to nonprofits. Now, I would want to know how much of a practical issue this is confining this to industrial zones. Whereas the cost, you know, in terms of the cost of land to develop or the cost for rental of existing space, how realistic is that for a nonprofit? Because I don't think we should go to this without knowing that. It's pretty hard to estimate how it is. Because if it didn't make any sense for a nonprofit to be able to afford the areas where they're restricted, then we would be effectively denied the right to operate. So I think that's something we should just do, yeah.
The Massachusetts Department of Public Health requires these facilities to be non-profit.
Yes, I understand that. It doesn't require them to be limited to industrial zones.
Why is he, okay.
So I think we want to look at that question.
Okay, okay.
Jim?
Rich, I can probably give you some guidance on that, that the downtown or any other retail space would be far more expensive. This is probably the most economical area for, to be in.
Okay, we want to know that.
I believe it, I believe it is. There's, there's not...
We want to know that because specifically, we think that is a finding. When we present the issue at town meeting.
Doug?
I think, I think it should be more important to locate it in the right place. And they'll find a way to make it profitable. And if it's not, then they won't do it. I understand it may be a hardship.
But they'll find a way to make it feasible.
To break even.
Feasible, economically feasible.
Start with that and then let them see, they can make a case that it's not profitable and they have another place. Maybe we can consider it in the future.
Jim?
I have, next week, I believe, EDIC meets. I think I want to make sure I present to them that this is what we're, the board's recommending, that we're moving this in that direction. Is that our intention?
We're going to find out in a moment.
Well, I mean, I mean...
Whatever the board...
I don't, I know they haven't discussed it. This is, it might be news to them unless they watch, watch it tonight. But when I bring it up next week, I will say that this is what's happening, so.
Very preliminarily, at this point. We're heading in that direction.
My, my only, I wasn't sure where they could go. I just, I always thought, why don't we just let the drugstores do it and not worry about it? But if we have to put it someplace else, I'm okay with that, too. I have no issue either way.
Remember, it could be a leased building, rehab building, new construction. So if there's space available in the tech park where there are people struggling up there, we can, if one more tenant, you might be able to consider.
Some of the employers might not like it.
Amen. I hear you. But, you know, there are nine applications in Barnstable County. And they apply by county. And some of them are fairly big groups out of Indiana and other places who have taken an interest in this. So we'll see if any one of the nine choose Falmouth. We have to have a space somewhere for them to go. And right now, our preliminary initial discussions, we can pass along to the EDIC. Is the town planners looking at the LIV zoning district. And the only one we have is Tech Park, unless town meeting wants to have another piece of property zone or something else that accommodates the use. Otherwise, they'll be spread throughout all your LIAs zones and your business zones and whatnot. So it's a, it's a public policy decision. But, you know, town meeting will have to decide.
One of the things they always bring up is the impact on traffic. Do we have any idea? We have no idea.
I have no idea.
No, I didn't think anyone did.
I think nobody knows.
I know, that's, I was just...
And that brings up a comment that I want to make. Because like with the wind turbines, we wanted to keep us as, this board, as a special permitting agency. And because we wanted to see how it would go and whether there are any huge loopholes that we really needed to hop on immediately and make changes. Is there any feeling about that? Because as far as who should be the agency, the special permitting agency? Ralph?
Yeah, I was wondering if the Board of Health has been consulted in these other towns before they develop their bylaw? And whether or not, I mean, the dispensing of marijuana and marijuana products sounds like a health issue to me. Because it's got to be prescribed by a physician. And I'm just wondering whether or not we should, we should take that into consideration. And my other comment is, I have no problems with being the special permit granting authority, although I don't know whether or not who else can, who else could do it. Would maybe the, can the Board of Health be designated as a special permit granting authority?
No.
And the reason is?
It'd just be the selectmen, yourselves, and the Board of Appeals.
Okay. And then the other thing is, when you read these things and you think about the whole overall concept of this, you wonder whether or not, I mean, if you say the Attorney General approved Dennis's already, I'm just wondering whether or not, if you make it so restrictive and so difficult for something to happen in your town, whether the Attorney General would turn you down? I'm guessing that they might.
Well, again, like any other use, so long as there's an opportunity for them to locate somewhere here in their community, he's not going to, she is not going to guess. If in fact, people come to town and they can't find a spot and they find it problematic or it doesn't work, in fact, then, you know, they can make a complaint to the Attorney General's Office. But the Attorney General's Office won't surmise anything.
Regarding the Board of Health, I think, once we get something underway, a simple referral to them for comments would be appropriate.
I've had some discussions with the health agent. Again, just like any other place that produces foods, they have an inspection program. And they have to inspect all these things. But the Department of Public Health, believe it or not, has ruled that this is not a food. So right now, the health board doesn't have a role.
They've never had hash brownies?
Rich?
Right now, the Board of, the Department of Public Health has ruled it not to be a food. Therefore, the Board of Health doesn't have a role at this point.
I understand a deadline for applications, they had to designate a county. And now there's another application period that's quite expensive.
Yes.
Do they indicate the town at that time, or are they still going to go by county?
They're still going by county, but they actually have to have a financial performance standard by, they have to come up with half a million dollars as a down payment to show that you've offered franchise financially to actually commit. And the state is going through that process between now and I think the end of the year.
But there may not be any in Falmouth?
We won't.
What's the maximum number that can be in Falmouth? I think there's two, right?
You can have two per county.
Per town?
Per town, county.
Sorry, five per county.
Five per county, but could there be more than one in Falmouth?
I don't know. I'll find out. I know, I know that they're countywide, and there can be five per county.
Be kind of, be kind of interesting. It, you know, bothers me a little bit that this has to be a nonprofit and yet it's so expensive to get going. I'm wondering how it's going to be economical viable for an organization to get into this business. Just pay half a million dollars just for an application, it's now refundable, plus whatever was 300,000 for the first one. You're putting in a lot of money. Not sure you're going to get a site, not sure it's going to be approved, and not sure if you're going to make any money. It doesn't sound like a very good financial investment.
Well, the board, let the planning board focus now on the land use stuff. My understanding is just because you're a non-profit doesn't mean you don't make money.
Right.
So let's not worry about that.
I'm not worried about it, just...
I know.
I'm curious, that's all.
Your role would be to find a spot that makes sense from a land use perspective for the town. And if it's prohibitive or problematic, then, you know, they...
Send the drawing board.
Back to the drawing board. But right now, we're heading in a certain direction of an industrial zone by special permit. Ask the board to seriously consider, you know, special permit granting authority business will interfere with a lot of the planning stuff you're going to be doing. So think about that as a, as you move forward.
I think that the selectmen should be the special permit granting authority.
Fine idea.
I wanted to make that point right away.
I don't agree. I think we should do it. But I think that these are pretty different. In Dennis, they're more focused on the zoning aspects and the locations. And in Mashpee, they're more concerned, it seems like, with police interaction and legal and liability issues. I think both are kind of complicated, and I think, I hope ours is a little simpler. And I don't, I don't think we should try to discourage it by making it complicated.
Well, you know, if we have a zone that we know is not near any, or has a performance standard of 500 feet from a place where children may congregate or schools, and obviously the hockey rink is a place where children may, children being 18 and under, congregate, so if you have that performance standard of 500 feet, think about allowing it as a matter of right, subject to special permit or a special site plan review. That way, it's a, it's just an administrative review through this board. Check, 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 and off you go. So it doesn't have to necessarily be a special permit. If the board wants to see both types of versions, we'll work on both types of versions.
I agree with Doug. I, I think we should have a well-thought-out bylaw. I don't think it should be written so as to discourage this. If these are done well, as they are in Colorado, so it seems, it could be an economic boom to this town as well. And people did vote for this. I mean, it could have been voted down. And by people, this is, seems to be something that the public wants. And if it's something that would benefit the economy, I don't think we should make it so restrictive.
Question for Brian.
Yeah, Rich?
What is in the statute, if anything, regarding insurance requirements?
In the public, in the Department of Public Health?
Yeah.
I know there are sureties required for performance, for decommissioning your site. But those are something that...
Talking about third-party liability questions.
I'm not that familiar with this statute.
It's noteworthy that you don't consume any of this product on the premises. So you don't have the same kind of issue you have with barrooms and liquor lines.
Oh, I see what you're questioning. Right, this is not a restaurant situation.
So you don't have that concern.
This is a, this is a retail situation. Where if you want to get in your car and start consuming the product, that's your liability.
But still, if you negligently dispense this to someone who shouldn't have gotten it, who, you know...
Again, you guys don't...
I can see liability issues arising.
And as a good attorney, of course you can. But again, the planning board, you're just going to focus on where this should go for our community. And what makes sense, what's the rigor of the regulatory view that you would have imposed. Let them worry about their profit margins and who may operate a vehicle under the influence of whatever. But I like that, I like the board's thought process. You know, let's make it simple. You can be by right and move, and in that direction, hopefully.
Doug?
I agree with the initial idea with the light industrial area. And then the site plan review can just be site-specific, and we'll just have to define our parameters for that. And we'll be ready to go in spring.
I know when I was reading both of these, I felt a greater degree of comfort with the Dennis bylaw, simply because in format and language, it reads very similarly to our other bylaws. So that, you know, you wouldn't have something disjointed. And I wouldn't expect that Brian would do something disjointed because he's had that voice for years in putting the bylaws in. But I was having difficulty with the Mashpee bylaw.
It seems almost like they didn't want it.
Yeah. Yeah. Kind of loosely put together and way too much referring to the state. So I much preferred the formatting of the Dennis bylaw. And I know certain of the things that are in there are the kinds of things that we would put in a bylaw if we're not just doing a by right and the site plan review. So.
Just a quick question for Brian. Do you know of any of the states that have this, if they are a non-profit?
I think in Colorado.
It is, it's a non-profit.
Right, I think so. But not in California. They actually have, you know, two-for-one, shirt sales, the whole thing.
Because that's kind of a misleading moniker, the non-profit. Because there are many hospitals that are very profitable that are listed as nonprofits.
The staff makes money.
It just means you don't, well, again, don't worry about their liability. Okay, so we'll move forward with the industrial concept and we'll try to actually make it as simple as possible, follow the Dennis format, and if we can, we'll try to make it better. I'll bring you both versions.
We'll have a hearing on this, right, Brian?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ralph?
We will have a hearing.
Once you go and vote them into the warrant, then we'll publish a public hearing.
Okay.
If you want to have some public input prior to that, you can do that, too. But typically, we put it on the warrant, then hold a hearing.
Okay.
I think as Jim mentioned, it should be very appropriate to consult with the town manager and the plan, and the Board of Selectmen before moving too far forward with this. Maybe you've done this already.
Well, in particular, EDIC, because that is their whole reason for existence.
Yeah.
Is that, that's what they have.
Understood, you know, again, but...
If it's my understanding, ED...
We're all part of the town.
Yep, we're all part of the town, yep.
Okay?
It's my understanding, EDIC does not need approval of town meeting for their, for their decisions, though.
No, but they can't change the zoning.
They can't change zoning, but they don't need to go to town meeting and get approval for some of the development activities that they're doing, is my understanding.
Some of it is covered under the agreement with the commission. So that they don't have to go every time something happens there.
My understanding, they don't have to go to the town, town administration.
Okay. If there are no more comments on that, let's move on to the program budget.
All right, I didn't print copies of the program budget. It was, some of the board voted some time ago. But in the program budget, there's an item that says the board will devote at least four meetings a year to planning issues. Whatever that topic might be, whether it's marijuana centers or flood zones, whatever it might be. So we have a thought here for the planning board's consideration tonight. And I'd like to just put it out there for you. We would like to expand that line item in the program budget, the four meetings devoted to planning issues. We would like to devote six to eight of your planning board meetings to a issue. And we would like to put a very high level of effort behind its staff ones. And that planning issue is the whole reinforce or retreat issue that is becoming, coming forward here, given all the changes in the National Flood Insurance Program and some of the things that we've been seeing up and down the South Shore and here on Cape Cod, some of the conferences we've been to. It's certainly getting a lot of traction. In the town of Marshville, they had some 500 people come to one of their hearings with regards to this whole reinforce and retreat. So we would like to have a staff-level effort on this issue, no different than what the board did for wind energy systems. It's perhaps one of the biggest land use policy questions this board will ever confront. And we've given this a lot of talk, a lot of thought, and we think we would rearrange the program budget to have this level of staff effort devoted towards the planning board. This planning board issue, it's very timely and topical. Seeing how it's coming, even coming up at the last town meeting with regards to, you know, bringing the sand in for the bike path or behind the ornamental bathhouse or whatnot. So we would appreciate just your initial thoughts to that. Some folks might have to wait on some of their other projects. But we want to talk to the planning board about devoting about eight, probably eight of your meetings to reinforce or retreat. With the idea that you will come to a future town meeting with a land use element, because we're working on that land use element, for their consideration. We're not talking about bylaw changes or policy changes or anything like that. We're talking about what's the goal that you want to bring as part of the land use element to town meeting.
Question? Question.
Rich.
The way I look at the issue generally, it's three things. It's reinforce, which to me means hard structure. Replenish, which means just replacing lost, you know, soils. And retreat, or retreat. To me, it's a three-part question.
All of this, I guess it's, it's a, it's a structural solution. Whether it might be soft or hard, or a retreat.
Structural or retreat.
Right. So we, there might, and we're, it may be that it's not all retreat or all structural. It, it might be there are areas in town where, okay, we're guys, we're going to have a hard solution or soft solution. There may be areas in town where it's problematic. We need to start retreating back from the coast.
That's going to be the debate.
That's the debate. And they had literally five hundred people at that debate in one of our South Shore communities. Because the federal government, I was with the selectmen last night, that there's changes coming in National Flood Insurance Program. They're not going to be paying for much anymore. Get insurance. So we're, we're talking some big, big policy questions. Town, townwide, shoreline-wide, practically nationwide.
Doug.
I'm in agreement with that. I think we should definitely start it, and that's a great idea. And I'd like to see if we can do it within a year.
Ralph.
Yeah. Brian, do you think there's, have been adequate studies done up to this point to give the staff, you and Marlene, what you need to study this and go forward with it?
That would be part of her, of her duties, would be to do the literature research. Get all the secondary information that we need to bring it back to this board, just as we deal with wind energy systems. But I'm confident there's a lot out there. Like we said, there's national issues. Other countries face this issue. This is almost a global issue. It's reached a point now in the United States, where at least the federal government is rethinking policies that are thirty, forty years old. And they're starting to trickle down. And it's gained the attention of, of state policymakers, for sure. And now it's gaining the attention of, of localities. So yes, the short answer is yes.
Okay, so you wouldn't require any more funding to do more studies? You think there's adequate information out there now?
No, we wouldn't do any primary research. This would be all secondary literature search stuff. But the level of effort, staff-wise, is the same level of effort that we need. Just as we went, we didn't know anything about wind energy systems. So it's come up on the learning curve, although we're up on the learning curve. In the background, please know that we're going to be meeting with FEMA in the Waco Bay National Estuary Reserve on Thursday. They have a grant from them to start looking at coastal resiliency. And they're going to use Falmouth as a test case. We're going to be there for a sort of a reality check for them. They want to be able to have this resiliency checklist applicable to towns throughout the Cape and elsewhere throughout the common coastal. So again, it's timely for, for the board to start thinking about it. Like you said, Jude, Jude Wilber wrote that editorial fifteen years ago. Seems to have calmed down, but it goes in cycles.
Is the Cape Cod Commission going to be of any benefit in this?
Sure. They're always helpful. We call on them, what, what do you know? What are other towns doing? Do you have contacts? They're always helpful.
I, I know from our discussions on our committee, this is a really hot topic. And it, and it's something that, given our geography, we really need to take on. And I, I agree with, with Brian that we should take this on as a high priority and devote the meeting time to it. Because it, it impacts so many other things. And we're talking about capital. We're talking about conservation. So we're talking about land use. So there's a lot of things that this is going to impact. And I wouldn't want to be sitting back on our heat hatches and find out that we should have been doing this twenty-five years down the road. So I, I think it's extremely important that we take this on.
Yeah. Huge is our infrastructure. How do we protect it?
And our economic interests.
Absolutely. I'm not one to follow the crowd usually, the stampede. But even though no one knows where this is going to end up ultimately, twenty to fifty years in the future, what we've been seeing over the last forty years or thereabouts is increasing water level heights, increasing erosion, and increasing storm violence. And the more that we can do to protect the community through the effort of our planning staff to understand what's going on and what we need to do as a community, the better I think we'll be going into the future.
I think, too, being in Falmouth, it's easy to deny that it's happening because it, it's happened much slower down here. It isn't like the outer Cape where they have the breaches that break through, and you've got whole different channels cutting into different harbors and inlets and things like that. It has been more gradual. And when it's gradual like that, you don't realize that there was more beach at this section. It wasn't a shingle beach. So, you know, over time, we've just kind of come to accept that. And, and you don't look at it as a drastic change. But if you look at it historically, it really has been.
There's a big issue up on Prince Edward Island, where I just returned from. The whole Southern Shore is being alarmingly eaten away. The Northern Shore is not, however. It's something that depends upon area by area.
Yeah.
Location, specific locality, specific localities.
Yeah. The, my feeling also is that no matter which way we do find that we have to go as a community, it is going to disturb a lot of people and be very expensive. So that the more information that we have gathered about how things are being done elsewhere, and what really should be done, the better capable we are of presenting where we need to go. So I do think that Brian's suggestion of eight meetings is great.
In your package, you should have a copy of, of an article that is a petitioner's article at this town meeting. I don't know if all the members have it, I think.
Flow neutral? Flow neutral bylaw?
No, the one-
No, it's, it looks like this. It's a petitioner's article.
I can get that one, actually.
I'm sorry. Well, there's a petitioner's article for this town meeting for the planning board to start looking at public utilities and velocity zones. And so we'll have an opportunity before town meeting to at least discuss these things. It's going to come up. So you can at least alert the town meeting as soon as you're heading in that direction that you're going to take a very good, hard look at this, not just velocity zones, but, you know, this whole structural versus retreat type of land use policy. Because it's, like I said, it's a hot topic. It's, it's not a hot topic spike. It's been, we've been just, been bouncing around for decades.
I think the huge wake-up call for us is we came within a very close miss of the effects of Sandy. And we saw that this even took the weather forecasters of the Weather Channel by surprise with its severity.
And again, it's, it's not so much a, you know, rainstorm, fall, tense, and type storm. You know, you're going to, you're going to have, in events, these things are going to be happening, even nor'easters. These are the storms about your coastline. Sometimes these northeast storms, they'll last two or three days. It can be worse than, you know, a one-day hurricane in terms of erosion and drainage on town facilities. By the third day, our first responders are pretty tired. Shelter managers are pretty tired. All right, so what I'll do is I will amend the program budget accordingly. And I'll bring it back to you on the twenty-fourth. And we will move forward here in the next few months and try to get you something. I'll maybe talk to Marlene about when we might be able to have this on your agenda. We're probably seeing some kind of preliminary information by the end of October.
Okay. I've got a question for you, Brian. Because if you're doing literature research, will there be the same kind of stack of information that the planning board members can avail themselves of?
It's the idea.
In the planning office? Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Brian.
Yes.
You, you just referenced the, this petition article, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah. I see there's only fourteen signatures there. But this was turned in on September fifth. Do they have the required number of signatures now for this?
I believe all that is required is ten. Because it's considered a second annual town meeting. I always tell folks you have to get a hundred. But my understanding is they have sufficient number of signatures.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
I know the enterprise tonight indicated that this is a petitioner's article for the meeting. Okay, so, moving along, zoning bylaw revision.
There's been no progress on that, I can report. It's just, you know, right now, there's a lot of appeals in the appeals court. A lot of things going on with the legal staff, extremely busy. I hope to be able to at least start up a scope of work probably late September, which is two weeks from now, right? So probably early October, I'm going to try to start, at least draft up some sort of scope of work. I've asked the zoning board to weigh in a little bit on it, obviously. They are a player in this. We're probably looking at going out to procure this, depending on whether or not it's actual, it's a law firm. We actually are exempt from chapter three, because it's so specialized. You pick up the phone, you get three quotes from law firms that specialize in this, or General Code Publishers out of New York. So we're probably looking at something or someone on board here by the end of the year, hopefully. Now that we have a little hiatus, the warrant has closed. We have a little space of time here. We'd like to start plugging in some of these other projects that are coming up, and this is one of them. But right now, the, that project has essentially had no movement since July. Or the money's where it became available July first. So July, August, and twelve, we already see. Ten weeks, so hopefully by week twenty, we can have some sort of news for you with regards to who, or at least procure. We have a pretty good idea what we want to do, you know, the inconsistencies, the archaic language, to clean up, clean things up. So hopefully by the time we finish up any, actually, you'll have no hearings. There are no, there are no zoning articles. There are articles that implicate the planning board, but you won't have to hold any hearings this, this, this fall. Which is a, a good thing for, for you, and gives us a little extra time to be doing some of these other things. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll know who's on board with them. But that's where we are.
Speaking of articles that implicate the planning board, what is this business about makes the planning board in a pointed position? You haven't heard that coming up? I've heard some rumblings about that.
I've heard a thing.
Well, they may be rumbling, but that's not easily done, because it's elected under the charter.
Yeah.
So it'd be a charter.
Charter, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Flow neutral by, oh, Doug.
On our previous discussion about the program budget, do we need to have a vote to move you guys forward? And if so, would you do something right away?
Well, we're going to, I'm going to move right away. I don't want you, I don't want to vote tonight, because you don't have anything in front of you. I at least wanted your thoughts and consensus on, thoughts on the, on the issue, so I can move forward with it. I'll bring it back for an amendment for the board. Because I did ask you to look at it, vote for it. We'll take away from other items in that program if in fact we're able to avail ourselves of one of the staff person here this fall, and plug that person into those other items. So there's lots of, there's lots of balls in the air right now. But we just thought it was a very important thing to do. Obviously, the board agreed. And we'll just arrange things to accommodate. Remember, you are the main client, believe it or not. And this is a very important issue.
Because I'd be willing to, I'd be happy to review any kind of email links or anything that you run across in your preliminary investigation.
Yeah, no problem. So yeah, I will, I'll bring something back to the board for you to, plus, and obviously, the, the management of the town has to be involved. The selectmen voted too. So I need to be able to make sure that, that there's all the, everyone who needs to know knows. But you're the first to, or you're the second to find out about this. Discuss this briefly with the town manager.
And I have not heard any noes or hesitation from the board members tonight. At this point, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. So we'll get back to you on that. And we'll get back to you on procuring some sort of specialist to help us out on the zoning violence. One of the reasons why you don't have any zoning articles. And unfortunately, there are no zoning articles being submitted by petition. We have enough patches on that, on that bylaw to keep things going for a while. And finally, Madam Chairman, on your, on your agenda, you have a copy of this that the Water Quality and Management Committee has put together. It's a flow neutral bylaw. And it, it does implicate the planning board in a couple of areas. But what this does essentially is allocate capacity. The purpose is, it allocates the capacity of this treatment facility up on Blacksfish Island. Now that we are going to be having more than one sewer service area, right now, we have, let's see, the Woods Hole Main Streets or Drive. We have Silver Beach. But New Silver Beach doesn't connect into West Falmouth. The Little Pond Sewer Service Area will be connecting into, to the West Falmouth plant. And this is essentially the bylaw that will govern how much of that flow gets allocated into, and how it's calculated. Some of the main points I'll just highlight for you, because you just got it. Under the purpose, you'll see, one of its purposes is to support broader community planning objectives. More on that, more on that later. Under the determination of waste water, waste water flow, we're going to either use total five calculations or water meter data, whichever the Public Works Director or Board of Public Works determines is most reliable at the time. And the number of bedrooms will be based on assessor's records. And we're going to assume, for the sake of argument, that the assessor's records are presumed accurate. Again, I've been, I've been working with the committee on this. And that presumption is rebuttable. But one of the important features of this, of this bylaw is under section one eighty forty. And you'll see that the-
One eighty-one.
Dash forty down the bottom there. You'll, on the first page, you'll see that the select, you'll see that the Board of Selectmen are notified by the superintendent with regards to the availability of capacity. And the selectmen in consultation with the planning board may set priorities for the available capacities. That ties back into the purpose when we talked about the broader community planning objectives. One of the things that will be coming under discussion for this board to consider is banking some of the flow. For projects that are of, say, economic development. Some towns have a sewer bank for their industrial park. A bank of sewer capacity for, for housing projects. A bank of sewer capacity for institutionally uses, or whatever it might be. And it's typically then a bank of this capacity reserved for folks who simply want to add bedrooms to their small homes. That way, it's not some sort of first come, first served. You actually have a prioritized flow determination that can be changed over time. But at least you have a bank reserved for specific purposes. You'll also note, there's been very generous on the second page of the bylaw. If you're in the sewer service area, if you're a single-family home on top of page two, you get four bedrooms as a matter of right. And a theory behind- And the theory behind that is that if you're gonna be paying a thirty thousand dollar betterment, you need to get something out of that. Besides a thirty thousand dollar betterment. So the committee has come back with this four as a matter of right. So if you have two, you get two more. If you have three, you get one more. And that follows either for multifamily residents and a little bit for non-residential development. There is a variance section. So if you can demonstrate, relief can be granted without substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. They can, actually, there's a failsafe. Not failsafe, but there's a relief mechanism for those who just need the extra space, wherever it might be. There are tests, one and two, about being able to place a standard Title V system on your property. But in, at the end of the day, if in fact, the Board of Public Works, which is the Board of Selectmen, determine that they can grant you a variance without departing from the intended purpose of the bylaw, they can't. You may have a situation where you have a house somewhere, and they simply want to add a fifth bedroom, or wherever it might be, and they've got a small lot. Technically, the Board of Public Works, should the bylaw pass, will be authorized to grant a variance. And the rest is your typical, in a way, it only applies to you, and the transferability, susceptibility. You violate it, you get fined fifty dollars a day. So that in a nutshell is what will be at this town meeting. We have some time to consider it. There are some last-minute issues that have come up with water enough. We can actually have, or absorb the New Silver Beach Sewer Service District into this bylaw where it doesn't connect to the wastewater treatment plant in West Falmouth. And we'll be reviewing that with the legal beagles here over the next few days. But otherwise, it should appear, as you see here, intact. And I'm hopeful that, taken since 2011, it's taken a couple of years to hammer this out. But I think the committee should be commended for their hard work. Go from there. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Rich.
What other areas do the Board of Selectmen typically decide on variance?
Under the town's charter, the Board of Public Works went away. Years ago, we had an elected Board of Public Works. Elected Board of Selectmen, elected planning boards, school committee, and housing authority and whatnot.
Community.
Right?
Yep.
The charter did away with the Board of Public Works in its entirety, and gave those responsibilities to the Board of Selectmen. So they are now acting under this bylaw as the Board of Public Works. And they, don't connote a variance for the zoning context. It's essentially a waiver or a grant of relief.
No, I understand that. But I look at this as being a zoning issue that would normally go to the DPA.
This is not, okay, this is not a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
This will be, this will be a general bylaw.
Okay, I got you.
Off we go. So they
So not two, not in 240, right?
It's not, it's, it's chapter one oh, whatever, or 180.
180, yep.
180, and it's the Board of Public Works. There was some initial discussion years ago about having the Board of Health. But again, I think it was wise to have the Board of Public Works, because it's a big public facility. There will be eventually, in some of the other sewer service areas, where sewerin, in and of itself, simply won't reach the TMDs. Where there's gonna be, there's gonna have to be some polishing of the watershed by IA systems. Meaning, you know, septic systems that reduce matriculation. Not for this sewer service area, but there probably will be one or two. There'll be a Board of Health component. They'll be looking at the installation of those IA systems to meet the clean water, especially the TMDs.
Doug, do you have?
That answered my question, why the Board of Selectmen were doing it. I do have one other. I don't know if you can answer it, or maybe I'll find out later from the people on the committee. Initially, where they start talking about existing development and existing single-family residents. It says, family dwelling on a parcel of forty thousand square feet or less may increase the number of bedrooms by four, to four by right. And each bedroom added requires ten thousand square feet of land. And then when it gets to multifamily residents, it just says existing development and modifications. And if you wanted to add a bedroom per ten thousand square feet, but it doesn't say about initial size or number of bedrooms, the way the
Yeah, I'd have to ask the committee.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I read it pretty carefully, and Doug, I think it does that. It basically says that everybody gets four bedrooms. It says forty thousand square feet or less, not or more.
But I'm talking about the multifamily.
No, but that says the same thing for multifamily too. It repeats itself. So that you need forty thousand square feet or less. So they're basically saying, if I'm reading this correctly, every house in Falmouth could have four bedrooms, if you're in the sewer district.
We're, we're, we're just talking about this sewer district.
Right.
Which is the Little Pond Sewer Service.
But this goes on to say in the beginning, that it's removing the existing 180 for the old Silver Beach and replacing that. Now, the thing is about that one.
And we're, we are reviewing that.
But that one has a restriction for three bedrooms only. And this would now make that overriding that and making it four, if you did exactly what this says.
And that's why we're looking at this language, Jim. I have to mention that we may not be able to take New Silver Beach out.
Right.
And this language may have
But in, in general, I think this is designed to get passed. I think a lot of concessions have been made here, so it'll go through.
We, I think the committee should be commended in trying to be fair and practical.
Right, I, I recognize it as being fair and practical with the idea that they really want to get it passed and not fight about it.
But you know, they, again, I think sort of the thought process is legitimate. You're asking people to pony up sizable amounts of money, to then restrict the development rights. You calculate the number of your bedrooms in the sewer service area. If everybody took advantage of it, I think it's three hundred. So you're talking three hundred people.
Why fight?
It's nothing in terms of flow. Some people might think three hundred people, a lot of people. But in terms of flow allocation, if everybody came charging in and added the max bedrooms, you're talking three hundred. I think it's a good move.
And we can make the assumption that the, any increase in bedrooms is also in line with any other zoning restrictions, setbacks, or heights, or anything like that. They would all have to conform to those as well.
Conservation Commission, whatever, whatever other regulatory process you implicate or trigger, you have to fulfill.
Okay.
So you know, setbacks, full.
I thought the Water Quality and Management Committee did a very good job going through this, because there's some very ticklish issues here that they tried to address, and I think they spent a lot of time on it. And I'm particularly happy with 18039, which gives some flexibility on the development or the termination of wastewater flows. It provides a certain amount of flexibility for the town to look at with consent of DEP. And some flows will be based on water rates adjusted for seasonal variation and so forth. So I think there's a real practicality in determining the flows that are gonna be sent to the treatment plants. And of course, the next section talks about the capacity, which I think is, brings in the planning board as well. I thought that was well done.
Ralph, do you have?
Yeah. I'm, I'm having a hard time with understanding 18042-2. Where they talk about allowing septic systems in an area that's being sewed. And I'm trying to understand, I'm having a hard time reading that and understanding what it's saying. And I just, I'm finding it hard to believe that they're going to allow septic systems in a sewer area.
No, the, what they're doing there, Ralph, is you go back to, it's a mandatory connection under chapter 180
Yeah.
38.
Yeah.
You have to connect to the sewer. Under that section of 42, that's where they grant a variance or a waiver or some form of relief. One of the tests that the Board of Public Works would ask the applicant to demonstrate is that, what could they do as a matter of right? In other words, could you fit, in theory, a Title V septic system on your property? And they would ask for a referral from the Board of Health.
All right.
So let's just say I have a, you know, I've got a two-bedroom house, and want a five-bedroom house. I need, I need a variance from this bylaw. You would have to then at least come up with a preliminary design that shows that if you weren't sewed, you could walk down to see the Board of Public, the Board of Health tomorrow, and get yourself a septic system, and off you go. So that's just one of the tests that the Board of Public Works could ask an applicant to demonstrate. If the applicant comes in and says, gee whiz, I like a five-bedroom house, oh, but you know, I've got a groundwater elevation that's just below my slab grade house, and there's just no way I could ever, ever fit a standard Title V system in. And then the Board of Public Works would, you know, kind of scratch their heads and say, well, you know, we're giving you something other than what you would have as a matter of right, and you're gonna have to come up with another test here. Of why would you grant this waiver or relief or variance?
Okay, I understand that. And the other thing is on 18047, it says that any person found and violating the provisions of this chapter shall be served by the town. I, I think you need to be more specific. Who's going to be, who's going to do the serving? Which department? Who's gonna do that? To be served by the town is very general. So I think you need to be more specific there. That's, that's my comments.
Okay. Good comment.
One of the things the committee's been trying to do is deal with the issue of checkerboarding, which goes to what Ralph was talking about. And what they're attempting to do, if someone puts in Eco Toilet, they want to be able to give them an option of not connecting to the sewer if everyone else is connected. And that's an incentive to try to use the Eco Toilets. How that plans out, I'm not quite sure. But they're looking at the Eco, what they're calling checkerboarding. How you skip over a particular property. Now, if that doesn't work effectively, and you have to connect, obviously, they have to pay the, pay the cost to connect it. But that's one of the issues they're looking at. The other issue that hasn't come up yet is the cost of connection and so forth. And that's a lengthy discussion that hasn't happened yet. As to what it's gonna cost, what's the terms of connection, the years, they're talking about twenty, thirty years for payment. Some people may need thirty years, some may want to do it sooner. So there's a number of other issues related to this that haven't been defined yet. But one of the things on the exception would be, you skip over someone if they install an Eco Toilet.
Well, we'll see, right now, the bylaw says it's, it's a mandatory connection. Those discussions are ongoing about checkerboarding. The betterment issue, whether we get to have special legislation to go out more than twenty years to get that to be more, more practical, is a question for others. Right now, one of the issues with the checkerboarding is, okay, you put an Eco Toilet in, or whatever, you know. You sell the house to somebody else, you know, they take out the toilet, and then you get all sorts of managerial issues and whatnot. So right now, the thought process is heading into mandatory connection, but I know the discussions are ongoing, checkerboarding, and I'm happy to have that part.
Any other comments?
Okay, so that, that will be up for the September 10 meeting. There probably, more than likely, will be that New Silver Beach change. Implicate the planning board somewhat, so take a look at all this, and we will see you That is an hour and a half worth of update.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Are there any committee reports tonight? Jim?
Yeah, I saw something that just came across my desk on the EDIC that was news to me, hadn't been discussed at any meetings yet. But they've got two proposals, or we should say, we, I'm now a member, I'm not just observing, of reuse of the landfill. I don't know if that's news to me. They've got two different companies proposing, one's proposing a thirty thousand dollar study, and another's a fifty-seven thousand dollar study. And it's a reuse of the landfill. It's really preliminary. I just, actually just got the email, so I just thought I'd just
No defined reuse?
Well, they're gonna identify all the other possible uses, with the idea that solar is a big, a big part of it. I mean, they're all, that's what, in both presentations, that, that was the meeting, that looks like where it's going. And parks and recreation and other, other uses, but hasn't been discussed, it just, just in the paperwork coming through, and we meet next week, so in a couple of weeks, I'll have more information.
Okay.
I went to my first coastal ponds management committee meeting last night, and it was very interesting. I think I'm gonna enjoy that. Eight of the nine people on the board were there, and they all seemed very involved and engaged. They took time to explain to me their mission, their overview, and how they manage the fourteen abeyments. They're looking at long-range planning for mooring placement. They, a couple of years ago, did a study of Green Pond. I don't know if you recall, town meeting approved some funds to do that study. And they've got some long-range planning ideas that they're gonna soon put together a meeting with the members of the neighborhood in that area, and run it by them first, and get some feedback before they present to the selectmen their long-range plan. And then they have a lot of things going on. They're involved with Chuck Martenson as the Natural Resources Officer that's on the board. And they discuss the shellfish propagation efforts, and the progress and the success of the upwelling, which is all going very well. The scallop population that they're putting in Little Pond is doing very well. And they're very excited about the whole shellfish propagation program, what they have going on, and the new person that's working with them seems very knowledgeable and trying a lot of new ideas, so it sounded very good. They have the Cedar Lake Fish Ladder work underway. They're pouring the concrete now, they hope to have that done by the end of this month. That's a big project for them also. And they've got a lot of interest and a lot of good planning. And they were very interested to know that we're now taking an interest in the coast a little more, a little more focused, so that was good news for them. So I'm looking forward to that.
Great.
Just a quick question. Did you mean scallops or oysters for Little Pond?
Oysters and scallops in the upweller. They've got a lot of scallops that they're also seeding.
In Little Pond?
No, 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 in their upwellers.
Upweller, okay.
They have a few different upwellers. They have some at the harbor, some in West Falmouth. And I have, I have to learn a lot about the upwellers. And at the next meeting, we're gonna take a look at one and understand more how they work, and that's very interesting. And they're also doing Cohawks in another upweller.
Just a point of clarification. A couple of weeks ago, when we assigned these liaison positions to the various committees, I thought it was a very, very good idea. But Jim made a comment that I'm just curious about. He said he was a member of EDIC. We're just, we're not a member, are we?
I've been appointed.
He's been appointed.
I'm an official member.
Oh, you're an official?
I was a liaison. I got myself appointed. I am now a appointed member, I'm both.
I just wanted clarification, because I don't feel like I'm a member of Water Quality. I purposely don't sit at the table.
Two months ago, I got appointed.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think that I am appointed to this committee, am I not?
I think you are, because I believe they are supposed to have a representative from the planning board as a member of their committee. So there, there are different things that we're dealing with here.
But we've been nominated as a liaison, not as members. Jim's situation a little different.
Right. And Doug's is also, because they require a member from the planning board, and we haven't had one in the past. We've had somebody else representing us.
But I don't feel like I'm a member of that committee, because I'm not appointed.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So there are different parameters with these different representations. Anything else? We, not our committee, we don't have anything at this point right now.
No.
Okay, future agenda items, is there anything anybody would like to see on future agendas? Okay?
I think we got a full plate.
Given that we're gonna have this new coastal focus, maybe, I don't think I want to dream up anything.
We're gasping.
Thanks. I was holding my breath there.
I'd like to ask the board a question. We met at six thirty tonight. And occasionally, in the past, we've taken votes of the committee as to whether we wanted to change the start of our meeting. Does anybody Does anybody have anything, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but it doesn't involve public notification, does anybody have any feelings as to whether you'd like to see our meeting starting at 6:30 instead of 7:00?
I would not.
You would not?
It's really tight.
It's tight for you?
Yeah.
Okay, it gets a tight for me, too.
I had to sprint to get here.
Okay, so we'll keep it at 7:00. Every, as I said, every once in a while, we throw it out.
Every once in a while's okay, but it's-
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I mean, every once in a while, we throw the question out for the board, because we have different members, you know, coming in and out.
I could do either one, but I'd like to stay with one.
Oh, yeah.
If I didn't get Joyce's reminder today, I think I would have gone.
You might have forgot. I might have too, who knows?
Because I had my phone set for the 7 o'clock previously, and I live by that.
Right, exactly. Okay, there is no correspondence in the folder, so now I need an adjournment motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved to second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.